A call to order, the Town Council Regular Session at 7:37, Monday, February 14th, 2011. Happy Valentine's Day, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Dale, could we have the roll call, please?
Council President Whaley.
Here.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty.
Present.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. We have approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session for January 13th and January 24th. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the work session and the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. We also have the approval of the minutes. Can we have a motion for the regular session, January 24th, 2011?
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. The consent agenda. Would anybody care to have anything removed from the consent agenda?
Hello, I'd like to remove new business D, letter D.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda with removing item D?
I move acceptance of the consent agenda, removing item D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to licenses. We have a resolution granting a victualing and holiday sales license to Kingston Road Coffee, LLC, doing business as Best Eaten, 621 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Application by Mary Haverly, managing member, 45 Lambert Street, Narragansett. And welcome, Mary.
Hi, how are ya?
Good. We're thrilled.
Hello.
If you could just tell us a little bit about what your plans are, and the hours, and so on and so forth. You've been here, done this before.
Yep.
So welcome.
Yep. I'd love to see everybody back in our drive-thru. But we got the original coffee. If you've been around New England for a little bit, the original recipe back. We bought the rights to the name. It's me and three other owners, former owners of Tim Hortons, came together, along with two other investors, to form this corporation, Kingston Road Coffee, Best Eaten. For right now, we're gonna probably open at 5:00 and close at 10:00. When it gets closer to summer, we're looking at doing 24 hours, then we'll reapply for that license. And we're gonna be doing coffee. We're working on keeping Cold Stone in the building, so we're working with that franchise as well. It was different than Tim Hortons. And we're also looking at carrying sandwiches. It may not be the Blimpy brand, but some kind of lunch soup menu. So.
Questions here at the table. Jim?
You said you bought the rights, so does that mean Tim Hortons and the Gennecarelli family are out?
That is correct. Tim Hortons has nothing to do with it, nor does the Gennecarelli family.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you. And you're gonna put any funny logos on your coffee cups?
Would you like one? We'll do one just for you, if you'd like. No. No, it's just gonna be the regular. We changed it just a teeny, teeny bit, but it's pretty much the original, just Best Eaten logo. Yep. You're welcome.
Further questions here at the table? Polly?
Is the largest part of your business, is it the drive-in?
It's about 70, 75 percent of the business, correct. Yep.
It always looks busy.
And we hope it to be busier. Thank you.
Further questions?
I make a motion to approve license item A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded, so we're ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We'll definitely be there, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, license B is a resolution granting a tourist accommodation license to Sarah Isabella, 522 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for five spaces, 10 persons, subject to inspections as a bed and breakfast by the fire chief, and issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Application by Sarah Isabella, Willett Avenue, Wakefield, Rhode Island.
Hi.
Hi. Are you Sarah?
That is me.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And if you could just explain and give us some explanations about your bed and breakfast.
Well, I purchased the building in November, and as everyone knows, it was part of the Larchwood, which used to be a bed and breakfast type. And I'd like to bring that back to the table. And that's what I'm trying to do.
So do we have questions here at the table? We'll start with Carol, and then Jim.
Sarah, are you planning to live on the premises? And because currently you have a different address.
Yes.
So you're not living there yet.
Right.
When do you plan on moving in?
There are tenants in there right now until March 31st. So I'll be in there after that.
And did you do a lot of work to the place?
I actually didn't, but the people that I bought did.
It looks nice.
It looks, you should see the inside. It's amazing.
Really?
You redid all the bathrooms. Yeah, it's amazing. It's beautiful.
And each room has their own bathroom, or?
It's actually a shared. So it's two downstairs with a shared, two upstairs with a shared, and then a master suite with its own private.
Very nice. And you're gonna have breakfast?
I'll offer food of some sort, yeah.
Continental breakfast that goes with it?
I'm not totally positive how I'm gonna work that yet.
Uh-huh.
I'm working out the details.
Very nice. Jim?
Sarah, are you going to bring the driveway so you can keep going through and come out on Main Street, or are you just gonna keep that parking area and be backing up onto Pond Street?
Well, I'm looking into the cost of that. Bringing it back out onto Main Street is currently cost prohibitive to me right now, but in the future, that is an option. I'm gonna get quotes on making that happen.
I just didn't know what the rules might be, Mike, for parking spaces in B&amp;B. It's not on the tip of my tongue. But I mean, if she's living there and has five rooms rented, let's say six automobiles, is there a, like, some of our commercial properties?
(inaudible).
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
(inaudible).
I'm fine with that. I just didn't know if part of your plans, long-term, were trying to wrap that driveway around and come out on Main Street, if that were possible.
Right.
Kathy?
Sarah, when you redid the bathrooms, are they handicap accessible? I know this was an issue for some of our other bed and breakfasts a few years back. We had some issues with that.
They are not handicapped accessible for a wheelchair, no. But I would, willing to do some kind of, you know, hearing impaired or...
(inaudible). Okay. So are you planning on doing any of that, expanding to that?
I don't think, at the present, no, because there really isn't enough space. It's not that big of a building.
That was an issue with the bed and breakfast, and that was a problem. I...
Right.
That's when it rang. It just stuck in my head. I wanted to make sure. Okay.
Polly?
If it's all in good shape, and you can move in March 31st, when are you planning to open?
Well, in a perfect world, it would be May 1st, but there is some, there are some things that I need to actually do.
Sure.
Before that occurs. So that'd be great, a month, but I don't know.
Better.
Right.
Good. But you'll be here in the summer.
No, I actually have one question, if, because I am applying under my personal name. But if I go to turn it into a corporation, would I have to reapply for the license?
Yes, you will.
Right.
So do you want to move forward, or?
Well...
Maybe you should do that now.
I haven't actually started the corporation yet, because I wanted to find out if this would all go through before I did it, because as you know, it's $500 a year. So I didn't wanna, I didn't know which way to do that.
We actually had this happen, couldn't, yeah, with Perry, right?
I mean, you all can give her some feedback, whether or not you want to approve this, so that she knows.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
Yes. So what should she do? Put it on, she should incorporate, and then come back?
Okay.
Should she withdraw?
Withdraw. Otherwise, you're gonna have to reapply.
Reapply anyway.
Yeah, and this has happened before.
Yeah.
Where it's been withdrawn, and then you just file under the corporation.
Right. As long as I know I have your well wishes at this point forward, then I can move forward. Okay.
You have our well wishes.
You've got two years.
Would we vote on that?
Withdraw.
I don't wanna wait that long.
No, no, no.
I'm only kidding. The council would change it two years. I move approval.
(inaudible).
Well, I think she's gonna withdraw.
Withdraw.
Do you wanna do that?
Yeah, I mean, I have to, obviously, because then I would have to redo, pay for the license again, yeah.
Do it in your corporate name, or if you're...
Right.
Whatever, LLC.
Okay, so we just, she just wanted informally to know. Okay. Yes, I move that we, excuse me.
She wants to withdraw. She needs to withdraw. We don't need a motion. Okay.
You'll see me again. Thank you.
So you have positive thoughts?
Yeah.
And then should we apply? I can talk to the board, we apply.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Good. Yeah, this is the easy part.
And try and get back before May, right?
Right. Well, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Sarah. Good luck. Okay, I believe.
So she's withdrawing.
Right. We don't need any motions. Okay, I believe it brings us to Communication B on page four. This is a communication dated February 3rd, 2011, from Javi Waxman, on behalf of the Taxpayer Reform Group, RIGHT, requesting the opportunity to make a presentation to the council, is received, placed on file in the Town Council, further directs.
Ella, we talked about this in the work session prior to the meeting, and some discussion about his presentation at some other towns, and some questions arose, same questions that we had, that we're going to send a note of thank you, but not right now, until maybe he addresses some of the other issues that were brought up by some of the other communities regarding his plan, and, you know, then maybe come back to us and down the road. So.
Okay, any further discussion? Jim?
He certainly has some interesting ideas, and they make a lot of sense to an awful lot of folks. But as we all know, we're all wedded to the market value of property valuations right now throughout the state, and that's probably not gonna change for quite a while. So tell him to keep at it, one of these days.
Okay, further discussion? Can we have a motion to place this on file, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. We have Communication C, resolution adopted January 31st, 2011, by the Burrerville Town Council concerning a variety of General Assembly legislation, are received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We discussed this also, and there are certain things that we felt were left out in this, and we decided the best thing to do would be, namely, the numbers on the bills. The best thing to do would be to file it.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. We'll start here at the table first. Okay, we'll hold, I know I have a few things, so we'll open it up to the public for comments from interested citizens.
(inaudible).
Could you come to the mic, please? I'm sorry. That way we can...
I don't have any comments on the previous things discussed, but is this when you speak up to...
I'm sorry, could you just state your name for the record?
Joseph Daly, Jr., 16 Sunset Ave. in Wakefield.
Thank you, Joseph.
I don't have any comments on the previous stuff, but I mean, is this when you introduce something completely new?
Sure, if you'd like to bring something forward, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, I wrote a letter to the editor, well, I made a statement to the town administration, actually. And it was mostly in the form of a letter to the editor in last Wednesday's Narragansett Times. Anyway, the statement that I wrote was, this is the original statement, not the article. It was in the Times, although the article in the Times is about nine tenths of it, anyway. "We, the undersigned citizens of the town of South Kingstown, Rhode Island, in Washington County, Rhode Island, hereby respectfully inform the town administration that the highways, streets, and roads of South Kingstown have not been plowed widely enough of snow in many places. Huge piles of plowed snow have not been pushed far enough back from the roadsides and intersections, or removed completely with heavy equipment during the months of December 2010 and January 2011. We're asking the town administration to direct the town employees, whose responsibility these duties are, to plow the highways, streets, and roads more widely, so that two vehicles can pass side by side safely, ensuring that they will make no contact against each other. Also, we would all be better off if a lot more snow removal was done, to eliminate all huge piles of plowed snow, which seriously block motorists' view of oncoming traffic at intersections." I added this statement as an afterthought. "School buses should be able to pass other vehicles safely and round corners without dragging large amounts of plowed snow into intersections." Now, I went around through Wakefield, Peastale, and Kingston. I got 50 signatures. I talked to 54 people. 50 were in total agreement. One lady in Peastale said she had been hit in her car, and she blamed it on, you know, the road conditions due to snow. Another, someone in Kingston told me that there had been a, what he described as kind of a bad accident up there. I'm not sure if it was on the URI campus or off the campus. This is not about overtime or additional expenses, but about, okay, during a snowstorm, you have plowing, and then immediately after, you have, you know, the primary plowing to handle, you know, the immediate need. But in the next two or three days, you know, eight hours a day, that when the guys doing this work are on the clock regularly, eight hours, just get out there with, you know, payloaders, backhoes, dump trucks, whatever it takes. And the police could call in, intersection's sort of bad, maybe even residents could phone in if something's really bad on their street. And just, you know, go around for the next two or three days, whatever it takes, to get this, you know, these, so you can see out what's traffic, if any traffic's coming. You don't have to get halfway out in the lane of travel, you know, to see if there's anything coming. And this is all about public safety. You know, I'm not, you know, trying to jeopardize anybody's job or anything like that. I just wanna see, we all wanna see, you know, these things, you know, just wider roads and plowed drifts at intersections, you know, removed, you know, better conditions. I realize, we all realize, conditions like this don't occur every year. So it's kinda hard to, you know, they don't occur very often at all. So when it does happen, you know, we're kinda caught short, you know. And we gotta do a whole lot of extra work, which is ordinarily necessary. But I talked to 50 people. They were in complete and total agreement. I talked to four others, two of which, two of whom would have signed, and they were, they're right on the fence, but for some reason or other, they didn't. And I only ran into two people out of 54 who actually said they didn't think this was very bad, and it wasn't very necessary or anything. So anyhow, I submit this to your consideration. I called most of the 50 people who signed and asked them to be here tonight. Did anybody manage to come from, you know, people who signed this petition, stating? Well, I don't know. I feel kinda bad that I'm the only one here, but believe me, this was a significant sample from the town population. And if I'd have kept going and got 1,000 signatures, I think 900 of them probably would have been in agreement. And...
Joseph, do you have the petition, and you would like to give it to the town clerk?
Okay, yeah, sure.
And I know that Mr. Alfred and I have spoken, and the main roads are the first priority, and then the side roads, and then the sidewalks where the children walk to school. And I know that there have been crews out at night, and Steve, you can address this.
Yeah.
I know, I don't know if it was Friday or Saturday night, they even still had some snow removal working on Main Street. So I know that some of the intersections were looked at because of the safety reasons that you bring forward. And I don't know if you want to address it even further, Steve, but it has been a concern, and we are working on it, but we appreciate you bringing it forward.
Well, today, today I was making about, 4 o'clock, I was making a right-hand turn from Kenyon Ave. into Lake Street, and there was a lady pulled up, you know, to go the other way. There wasn't room. If I'd have kept going, I would have hit her. I mean, on the, on my side, the plowed drift was still there, and it was, you know, kinda going out into the street like that. And there wasn't, you know, I didn't have room. I had to stop. It's a good thing I stopped, or I would have hit her. And it's still, you know, I mean, it's about half as bad as it was, but it's still, you know, someplace is kinda, kinda touchy. And anyway, I don't know, I heard about two accidents, and I hope there weren't any others, but I kinda feel that there probably were. So anyway, if you can just please see to it that, you know, the eight hours a day, regular day, three, four days, whatever it takes after that, please, you know, make the intersection safe and widen the roads.
Steve, did you want to? Thank you.
I couldn't disagree with the gentleman any more than I do. In fact, tonight, I wanted to thank the Public Works Department for the work that they have done. I think it's really important to understand what a snow removal process is all about. And when you're faced with a situation where you have back-to-back storms, as well as a rainstorm and immediate freeze conditions, you're not able to remove snow. Just as a process, South Kingstown has 11 sand routes. The sanding is done as a pre-treatment before a snowstorm occurs. That takes the first three hours of a snow operation. We have 22 snow routes, 300 lane miles of road that need to be plowed during the course of a, what it would be a four-hour period. If the snow extends for more than a four-hour fall period, then we're into eight. Over the two storms that were back-to-back, we had employees that were out for 30 hours straight, in an attempt to provide for the public safety of this community. The first priority is to sand and saw. The second priority is to open every road in town, so that if we have an emergency, and emergency vehicles need to get on secondary roads, they can. The third priority is to push back the snow. However, when you have a freeze thaw condition, and you have the snow frozen 16 hours after the storm event occurs, then the only way we're gonna move that snow is with front-end loaders. The front-end loaders were, in fact, as of last week, were still working. One of the other objectives that we have, after we clear the snow, is to, is to clear the loop for the pedestrians, for the schools. Our workforce worked eight hours from midnight on Saturday until 8:00 on Sunday morning to be able to get those loops opened up. They then worked for the next four days, clearing the sidewalks from Broad Rock, as well as on Kingston Road, where the, where the children from the high school park. They also were responsible, based on directions through the Police Department, to clear intersections where the snow piles were high enough to provide sight distance difficulties. They did that on both state roads and on local roads. The fact that you had as much snow that you had, with the rain in between, created some of the difficulty. This is the first time in the 35 years I've managed snow in this town, that we had to close parking on Winter Street on a Sunday morning because we didn't have the road width. Subsequent to that, we brought the payloaders in, and we brought that, got that snow out the following week. Our workforce has worked extremely hard, and I think that they deserve recognition rather than criticism.
I'm not criticizing. I'm just stating objectively the conditions that myself and a lot of other citizens observed. I mean, the guys did, you know, did all they could. But just during the regular eight hours for, days after the initial onslaught, whenever they get that done, I mean, during the regular workday, just gotta go around to a lot more intersections, and these, you know, these plowed drifts. I went down the end of my street, and I spent an hour lopping off about three and a half feet, eight feet each way of a plowed drift, 'cause my wife couldn't see around it at all. And I had to wait about 20 feet before I got to the corner, I had to make sure nothing was coming down Silver Lake Ave. To, you know, initially, you know, make sure I wouldn't, you know, hit somebody or get hit by somebody else. I mean, these eight-hour, you know, periods of normal workdays, they just gotta, you know, keep doing that. The men who were supposed to do this just have to keep doing the snow removal.
My answer to you is that they did continue to do that each and every eight hours that they were in for the regular work week. In fact, there was extended hours for two weeks after that, that final storm.
Well, they had...
So I think that we've done the best job that we can do with the conditions that we were faced with.
Well, Mr. Alfred, respectfully, the roads were still too narrow in a lot of places, and trying to get by a school bus, or an oil truck, or a garbage truck, you know, it was extremely difficult. It was awful tight. And a lot of intersections, you gotta get up halfway into the lane of travel to see. I mean, the next week, too. It should have been eight hours, you know, during the regular days, out there doing the same things. Because a lot of corners were really, really bad. And, you know, narrow roads were the other half of the problem, you know. So, I mean, I compliment the men for all they did. But unfortunately, you know, we got stocked so bad that a lot more needed to be done. You know, I mean, I heard about two accidents myself. One happened to a lady. She didn't say where. She was in Peastale, in the Oaks, when I talked to her. And she signed this. And so did, and some man up in Kingston told me, said it was a pretty bad accident someplace. He described it as a bad accident, and it was either on the campus or right close to the campus, you know. He lived on Diane Drive or Carriage Lane. So, anyway, you know, thanks awful lot for the work the guys did. But, you know, these conditions are extreme, but, you know, they were, they still had to be dealt with, you know, more so. You know. Thank you.
The good news is that spring is on its way.
(laughing).
And all that snow will be gone by July.
And your name, please?
My name is Ken Saint Amour, and I live at 336 Dougway Road. I used to live at 336 Dougway Bridge Road, but we don't have a bridge anymore. And that's kinda why I'm here. And I don't wanna beat this dead horse. I know it's been discussed. However, I live on the south side of the road, and it's the best side of the road to be on, because I can walk my dog without getting killed, and I don't get the traffic coming down from Exeter. So it's, it's really been wonderful. And I've been very, I've been very selfish, because I have neighbors and good friends that live on the other side of the bridge, who, you know, they feel bad, 'cause they can't come and see me any longer. And so...
May be a benefit to them, Kenny.
Well, actually, they mentioned that, Steve, but there is another, there actually is a legitimate reason for opening that bridge as soon as possible. And that is because of, during an emergency, in one of these big storms, not that we have a lot of snow around here, but we've, we get caught in, in our neighborhood, and you can't get out because it drifts over that turf farm. I mean, you could, you know, I know the guys do a good job with the plows, and, but they'd have to be there like every hour. And I consider older people that are down, wait a minute, that's, I'm an older person. If, you know, if you had a heart attack, or a stroke, or had a fire, or something, it may be difficult for an emergency vehicle to get into our street, or if we had to get out, for us to get out to get to Route 138. So I, you know, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And the other, other thing is that I read in the newspaper about, that it would have to, if they rebuilt it, it'd have to bring up to some type of code, which I don't buy at all. I think that's a lot of baloney. That bridge has been there for hundreds of years, and it was a single-lane bridge out in the country over, it doesn't get, what, a couple of hundred cars a day. It should be rebuilt as a wooden bridge. It should be rebuilt as a single-lane bridge, and keep it within the historical fabric of the community. And we don't have to spend a lot of money to do that. Well, you probably have to spend a lot of money, but you don't have to, you don't have to spend bazillions of dollars to do it. And that's all I have to say. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim?
I just wanted to follow up with his question.
Ken?
Steve, any laws in the state, why can't we have a single-lane bridge? Are there, what are the rules, traffic-wise, so on and so forth? Let's not talk money, let's just talk-
The federal Ashto standards would have the need for a, for a double-lane bridge. Could we rebuild a single-lane bridge there? We probably could. I'd want Mike to address whether there was any greater liability exposure than there was with the existing bridge that was there. I think the real question comes down to what the cost would be. I've got John Shock working on a report at this point on what those cost options are, but we're talking several hundred thousand dollars to be able to replace that bridge. The number of homes in South Kingston or properties that would be served that are north of the bridge, I think there's limited to eight. The real question that Ken brings up as far as the safety, it's the same problems that we run into on Ministerial Road if we have a tree down, or we have, I mean, what we have to do in a time of emergency is to get the heavy equipment out to be able to get passage on any road. Whether we are going to build a bridge doesn't mean necessarily that the Glen Rock is going to be open if we have severe storms, any more than Dougway would. I think that the council will have to look at what the cost options are, and if it has to be incorporated into a future capital budget, we'll have to determine where those funds will come from. There aren't, to our knowledge, any state or federal dollars that would provide us with the assistance. There's also the question mark as to how many permits would be necessary if we have to change the knee walls for what holds the bridge up. So we're looking at that at this point. We'll have an answer. It's certain that I can say to you that that bridge will not be put, put back in service in the immediate future.
Sure.
It just can't.
Yeah. Maybe you could build a toll bridge. I'll pay for it.
Are you looking for a job?
Oh, yeah, if that was, maybe I could, never mind. I'll go down and just set up a toll booth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Further discussion here on the table on that one? Okay. Steve, if you could just state your name, please?
Hi, I'm Steve Corley at West Kingston. I, I had an opportunity to interact with the town employees this, this week. And I called the Highway Department, John Shock, actually about Dougway Bridge, and suggested that they use a box culvert if possible, and it could probably save some money. And it sounded like he'd already heard the suggestion of a box culvert by who I talked to on the phone. And he did try to call me back, I didn't talk to him, but just thankful that he actually tried to call me back. And I also had to work with the town Assessors Department, and again, very professional people and very courteous. And they said they were going to meet me at a certain time, and they did, and very helpful. Just wanted to give you that feedback. I drove down Stoty Fort Road, I don't usually actually drive down Stoty Fort Road, my wife does. And between Slocum Road and 138, the road is pretty much not usable. There's a section of road where, where your tires are at one level, and the middle of the road's like this, and people's undersides of the cars are dragging across it. It really should be closed. And, but something pretty drastic needs to happen to that section of road. And today, the, I guess the school committee was supposed to pass their budget on to the, to the plant town manager. And I did go to all the budget meetings and their proposals are going to send you a budget asking for 1.6% increase, I guess. But some things that I looked at and brought forth to the school committee, I'll bring forth to you. Currently, our, our school employees get 17 days of sick and personal time, which is 10% almost of the work year. And my suggestion would be to cut that back to 5% or nine days, which is pretty darn good. And I would think that we currently pay $600,000 for substitute teachers, and we buy back on average about $100,000 worth of sick time, which is $700,000 a year. And I would think that conservatively, you could probably save $200,000 a year. If we eliminate the life insurance rider that we have, that's another $98,000 a year. If we eliminate health insurance rider to provide for health insurance to 26-year-olds, that's a savings of greater than $200,000 a year. So there's about $500,000 a year. We haven't closed a school, we haven't eliminated any school sports programs, which are important to me. And, and we haven't really needed to raise taxes as much. And I, I don't know what your decision is going to be with, if you're going to vote to increase the budget or not. But if you don't vote to increase it, and the school needs to close a school, I hope that you can make some time to work with them to close a school appropriately. And I would also like to think that you would give back any savings from closing a school, such as West Kingston or Matunik, which is budgeted out for capital improvements of a $1 million over the next five years, if you would put that capital improvement money back into the operational budget of the school committee. And those are just some ideas that I had. You know, I just looked at a few things in the, in the school committee budget. There's a lot more that could probably be looked at. And, you know, I would like our, all our employees to be able to make a million dollars, but it's just not affordable. And we have a really good pension and other programs and benefits. And to me, 10%, you don't have to work 10% of the year, you can be sick and still get paid, is, is pretty darn good. And 5%, I think would be reasonable. I would just ask that you call up APC, call up Arnold's, call up Hanscom Pipe, call up the Compass School, ask them what their benefits are, and see how those kind of things compare. Because those are the organizations within the town that are going to pay that tax money. And, no, I hate hearing it's, it's only 50 bucks for the average homeowner that they got to come up with. But, you know, it's 50 bucks this year, it's 50 bucks next year, and it just doesn't go away. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. Jim?
Steve, excuse me, did you share these ideas with the school committee the last time you were in front of them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Please come to the mic. And if you could just state your name.
Good evening and happy Valentine's Day. My name is Paul Northup, and I am a neighbor of Mr. Daley. The, he has a very valid point. And I don't, I'm not going to point fingers. The, I believe the town is doing the best they can with the resources they have. But I believe they can improve that. I don't think any of us, right now, tonight, if we took a field trip down High Street, could manage any of the sidewalks on High Street. We all watch the news with the towns, Warwick, these other areas. They're having difficulty with sidewalks being cleared for public safety. That's a problem they have, and it's a problem we have. The, I think if we put the effort that we have during the summer, spring and fall, as to keeping all our, our sport areas, the, I mean, the town does a wonderful job keeping these areas cut with the grass, and they look beautiful. If they could take some of that energy, or some of that information they have, resources, into the winter times and getting the town, getting the sidewalks, roads cleared a little bit better, we're not asking for a lot. A little bit better is okay. But Mr. Daley is, is right on point with the fact that there are some very unsafe conditions. There are conditions right in town where if there's a car parked, a fire or rescue truck cannot go down that road. So, I mean, when it's a men of the two with a, a public safety matter, somebody having a heart attack, that could be the matter of life and death. So I think it's, I think we've done a great job, but I think there's room for improvement. So I hope this doesn't fall on deaf ears, because I think public safety, and I hope the budget we have, isn't the line that we draw on public safety with people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment. Never will I say that we're doing the best that we can. We're always going to strive to do, do better, and hopefully, we learn from every experience that we have. So yes, are there things that we would do differently? If we could forecast the weather better, rather than knowing what it is after it happens, probably so. But certainly, our objective is to do what's best for this community. And my point in, in my discussion is to say, every one of the people that was working that storm was doing the best that they could for the community. And there may have been times in the past where you look at that and you say, well, gee, they didn't give you 100%. The crew that I've got at this point, I really think, put out above and beyond. Can we get better in the future? Hopefully, with the crew that we have, we will. And that's, that's what our objective is. Comments don't fall on, on deaf ears, provided the comments are tempered with the fact that there's a reality as to what we're dealing with in the field. And I appreciate your comment.
Well, I, I was not negative with anything I said, and positive. And I'm hoping that, I mean, this is, this winter was a challenge for everybody. Even the regular taxpayer shoveling a driveway. The, I, I just think there's room for improvement, no matter where it comes from.
I'm hopeful when you say that the winter was a challenge, that you believe that it's over.
I'm hoping it's over, absolutely. But, but as a taxpayer, I think we're, and you wouldn't disagree, I mean, people want the, the biggest bang for their buck. And we want, we, you want everything. And, but public safety is, is really number one when you stop and think about it. When you see, two weeks ago, I saw a, a person walking down High Street in front of the old Anka Dairy Bar, carrying a baby, and they couldn't go on the sidewalk. They were on the road. And when you put the news on, and you, and you see these people in Warwick, East Providence, people struck by cars because they can't get on the sidewalks. I mean, I'm not going to beat this to death, but, but I am a neighbor of Mr. Daley and his, his concerns are my concerns, and I think they're the concerns of a lot of other people. And I appreciate any effort that can be done to make it better. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Carol and then back out.
I'd just like to say to both Paul and Joseph, you know, everybody's experienced this problem, I think, in every city and town, from here to Boston. I mean, the snow, it's just such extreme conditions. And I think our town did a very good job clearing as best we could. But you go anywhere, and you're going to see these piles, and the sidewalks are difficult to maneuver. And I actually think we have done a better job here than in Providence or Boston. I mean, I've been in those two places recently, and very difficult to maneuver by foot or by car, so.
Kathy?
If I can add on to what Carol's saying, I'm in sales, I'm on the road. I've been on the road for the past couple of weeks, all over Massachusetts and Rhode Island. I haven't gotten into Connecticut yet. I have to tell you that I am very, very happy with the town of South Kingston and what they did with clearing the snow, when I've been into some of these other towns, because I think of it as a municipal person who sits up here. And it's atrocious, the other towns that I've been in, you can name any of them, from Worcester, which was god-awful. I was there Friday, god-awful. And you want to talk about streets not being able to, to pass, the people in Worcester should be up in arms. I pulled over just to reprogram my Magellan on a side road, and just to try to get down the street, to get to another street with cars coming, trying to back into driveways. It was absolutely disgraceful, Worcester. I've been all over, I've been in Stoughton, everywhere in Massachusetts, and I'm walking on the sidewalks, I'm practically killing myself on the sidewalks. The town of South Kingston, in comparison to what I've seen in, in some of the other communities, I was in Providence also last week, just, just atrocious. I was in Warwick. This town is head and shoulders above every other community, because I'm thinking of it as I'm walking along, saying, we would never get away with this in South Kingston, how bad these towns are. So I can tell you, in all my travels, in all the different towns that I've been to, and I'm not looking forward to hiking around some of the other towns tomorrow, my boots are wearing out. South Kingston has done a phenomenal job. The pushback with the big bulldozers on the intersections, because we only have certain big, that stuff was heavy. And you can't move it with just a pickup truck with, with the plow on the front of it. You need the big trucks to push that stuff back. So when we do the initial plowing, we get it off to the sides, and yeah, it is blocked up, but then we come back with the big, the big trucks to push it back. They're not doing it in the other communities. You should see me trying to stick my nose out into, into the roads of traffic. So when I'm, I'm traveling and I'm thinking about it, this, this town is, is by far, and maybe you'll say I'm biased because I'm sitting up here on the town council, but this is what I think of, because I'm driving by myself and I'm a woman on the road by myself. It's, it's terrible, and I think the town of South Kingston should be actually commended in comparison to what I've seen out there. I, I just truly, truly look at it from a different perspective. And I know that the hours that the men and women have been putting in has been, because, you know, Steve reports to us. I mean, we, we've certainly paid, you know, a lot of overtime, and, you know, we'll have records of it to show you, in the clean sidewalks on Main Street, other communities, their main streets aren't even touched. That's how bad it is. So I, I thought we were doing a great job. I, it's just my perspective, and I've been out there in the trenches, literally out there in the trenches. And I, and I want to commend John Shock and the people, and I think Steve was going to do that later on, and I was going to applaud them too for the work, because, like I said, I've seen, I've seen a lot worse, a lot worse.
We all thank God that South Kingston has a lot better conditions than a lot of other places. But please, focus on more snow removal and wider, you know, snow removal at intersections and widen the streets, please. This is, it doesn't have to happen too often, you know, hopefully we won't get these conditions for another five years. Blizzard 2005, that big snowstorm, 2005 might have been the last one, we had conditions like this. But please, you know, get a, remove it at the intersections and widen the streets. Get a little more. Excellent.
You know, you've, you've put me in a tough position. I traveled for 12 years all over the world. And I can respect what you're saying and where you've gone in New England. The, I've spent months in Minnesota, where they've had 100 inches of snow on the roofs, where in Montreal, the snow from the parking lots hasn't melted since June. I've seen it all. All I think we're asking for is just a little bit more, not a lot. We're not putting a finger on anybody saying you did a terrible job. We have not said that. Everybody's done a great job. I think there's room for a little bit more. And if I said right now, let's take a field trip, all of us, let's stop the meeting and go down into Honeydew Donuts and have a coffee, none of us would be able to walk on the sidewalk safely. Now, I don't, I, I agree, I traveled too for 12 years. There were some areas that weren't very well taken care of, some areas were. It's just, can we just get a little bit more? That's all we're asking for. I mean-
When you were hearing it, I'm just saying, Mike just-
Yeah, no, I, I, like I said, I've been all over the world, from South Africa to Singapore, to, to every place. The, and I've seen a lot. What I've seen here, and I live in this town because it's a great town, there's a lot to offer here. This has been a challenging winter for the town, as for everybody else. I just think there's a little bit of room for improvement. I mean, no finger pointing, no, and I won't say anything more, I just think, please, is there, maybe, maybe there's some things that are being overlooked, and maybe we could just step it up a bit. And that's my final word. Thank you very much.
Please come to the mic. State your name.
Hi, my name is Mike Pignataro. I'm here with my wife, Mary Ann. I live at 767 Glen Rock Road. I'm on the other side of the tracks from Ken St. Amore, in this case, the other side of the bridge. I came here to talk about the bridge and the, the repair of the bridge. And after hearing this gentleman, I'm not getting a very warm and fuzzy feeling, there's only eight on the other side of the bridge, well, we're one of the eight. That bridge has been in, in bad shape for as long as I've been here. We moved here four and a half years ago. So it shouldn't have come as a surprise. I mean, no planning. I, I did read in the paper, if I'm not mistaken, that there was $2 million additional in the surplus in the budget, which is great. Is that spent already? I do, my wife and I, we probably do about 25,000 miles each on our cars, and I don't drive to Florida, Canada. A lot of it is around here, a lot of it is back and forth to our house. And for me to go to 138 by taking Glen Rock Road, that road is a disgrace. It's, it's like going over speed bumps. That's two miles out of my way. I elect sometimes, most of the time, to take Mail Road and back on two to get back on 138. That's about seven miles each way out of my way. I don't want to stay like that for another year, two years. I mean, the, the way this sounds, you know, it's, it's like there's no rush. There's only, you know, eight people, or maybe 200 cars a day that may use that. Well, it impacts us very much. I mean, the, the way this sounds, you know, it's, it's like there's no rush. There's only, you know, eight people or maybe 200 cars a day that may use that. Well, it impacts us very much. This shouldn't have come as a surprise. And I'd like to hear a little bit more positive thinking about what is going to be done with it, rather than just, you know, we'll get around to it and see if it's worth it. It's affecting my home values, definitely. He's already, Ken has already brought up the fact with the safety aspect of it, which I wholeheartedly agree. But I, I would like to see some, you know, some positive thinking ahead here and some kind of encouragement that something will be done in the near future, not wait until, you know, what, capital budget, what, for 2012, 2013? It's unacceptable. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Further comments here at the table in reference to the bridge? Sure.
Mary Ann Pignataro, and I live at 767 Glen Rock Road. The bridge, as my husband said, I know it's beating a horse with a rag, but it's, you know it's been out for a while. And also in the summer, what are you going to do, leave the bridge like that as dangerous as it is? The kids in the summer jump off the bridge, people use their kayaks and go under the bridge. So I'm not an engineer, they say the bridge is dangerous. How is it dangerous? As soon as the weather gets warm, those kids jump off the bridge and they play there and everything. And it does impact us driving all around. Our only other way, Glen Rock Road is a disgrace, there's bumps and lumps, and when the UPS truck comes, you better run for cover, because if you're walking your dogs or, or you're in your, I have a small compact car, watch out. I had to go into a snowbank once, just, that, that's dangerous. And then the other way out through Mail Road, which is Exeter, there's three places on that Mail Road that when it freezes and rains, you can't, I can't get by, I don't have four-wheel drive, I, I can't get by. So I'm stuck, except for that disgusting Glen Rock Road with all the bumps and curves and the, and the ice and the snow is really not taking away that much. I'm sorry, they have, you know, a hard job, you know, that's part of the job, but it's not, it's really not cleared enough, because when that truck comes or a big, one of the pickup trucks come along, there's no room. Me and my two dogs, we, that was another time, myself and the two dogs, we had to go over, I practically fell into the snow, so I wouldn't get run over. Now, is that right? So what's happening with the bridge? I want to know. Are you going to destroy and just take it down and then just leave it like that? Because once the summer comes, the kids are going to be jumping off there again, riding their bicycles, fishing off there. What? What's going to happen? I'm really upset about it, as you can see. And like he said, we're one of the eight there, and we have a beautiful home there, and we love this town. I love it. And it's, it's not right. And then when they closed the bridge, I, I went over the bridge one morning and the afternoon I go over it again to take my aunt to the doctor, and, and it's closed, no signs, no nothing, just a barricade, nothing. It's not right. Thank you.
Jim?
Steve, what's your best-case scenario with that bridge? If everything were to fall in place, from design to money, putting out bids, what, what is the fastest, fastest potential time to get a replacement bridge there?
Until I get the final report from John, I can't give you a time schedule. I think some of the things we're looking at is pricing out what the cost of a, a bridge kit would be, and then I would have to determine how long it would take to be able to get that bridge kit, and then what the, the length of time would be for it to actually be installed. I have to also look at what the, the approaches are and whether or not we can continue to maintain the existing approaches or the, the carrying walls. All of that has to be looked at. At the present time, that bridge is going to stay closed. Until I can get that work done, I can't give you any, any specific answers. I also have to look at the fact that with limited resources available throughout the communities and in South Kingstown, it's going to be a decision point on the council's part on where the dollars would come from to replace a bridge where there's as, as little traffic as there is today on that bridge.
My second question before, my second question is, I certainly have been on Stony Fort, but Glen Rock and Stony Fort, are those two roads on our priority list for repair this year?
Stony Fort is, is on the priority list. I do not believe Glen Rock is at this point. Glen Rock would have to be looked at in the future.
Okay, so can I ask?
Excuse me, Mary Ann.
Oh, go ahead.
We have a town council member who would like to speak. You have to wait to be acknowledged.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. One moment.
Steve, does the entire bridge have to be replaced or can certain parts of it be fixed?
No, it's the entire bridge that has to be replaced.
Entire bridge. There's no way we could do anything with what's there?
No, from the stringers on up, the stringers, the stringers are, have completely eroded. They can't, those have to be removed, so the entire deck, as well as the stringers, the, the steel I-beams that hold the bridge have to be removed. How we replace after you take that off is really what the decision point would be.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. Is there any assistance that you see that we can apply for, you know, further down the line? I know that the cost that we talked about, I believe, was 600,000, and then a two-lane bridge, close to a million, and the economic time that we have, is there any?
You're giving costs that, that I haven't given you in terms of firm cost. I, I don't want to say that it's 600 or a million. I want to get the costs and provide you with objective information so that you can make an informed decision. That's what, what my responsibility is at this time. But I, I can't give you costs at this point.
Carol?
When will you, when do you think you'll have that information, Steve?
Hopefully within the next two weeks.
Further questions here at the table? Excuse me, Joseph, I'm going to go back to Mary Ann.
Thank you. The gentleman answered the question I was going to ask, how long will it be? Because like I said, when the, when the weather changes, I see the kids there, they're under the bridge, they're over the bridge, they're jumping off the bridge, people are going with their kayaks underneath, so are we going to wait for someone to get injured before something gets repaired or fixed or whatever? I don't want that to happen. I know the kids there, they're, you know, they use that bridge a lot, they're not supposed to, but they do, and I don't want to see them get hurt, and I know you don't, so we have to do something. Thank you.
Joseph?
My wife and I just happened to be driving out past, to Dougway Bridge, I think it was last Friday, and, you know, it's, we were really surprised we couldn't get through it all. And I was speaking with Oliver Watson Green, the man that owns Peter Potts Pottery, which is on the north side, the other side of the bridge from here, and he described one of the detours as being eight miles from, I don't know exactly how, but eight miles to get to, I don't know, it was 138 or two or what, but in, in this day and age, you know, it's beautiful to have a historically accurate bridge, but, I mean, in this day and age, shouldn't we have two lanes to travel on anything?
You just want that money tree, Joe, as you've got one. The money tree, if you have one.
Just to clarify, it's not a historical bridge. That bridge was last built in 1976, from the stringers up.
Did we ever have any covered bridges in South Kingstown? Just to lighten it up.
That's a great idea. Should we vote on that?
But have we ever? Does anyone, is there any historic? That's right, we'll just, we'll pass on that question.
My, please come forward.
My name is Richard Donnu, I live at 140 Falls, Silver Lake Ave, and I'm here tonight to make a couple of comments about the snow as well. And my first comment is, is there an ordinance for clearing sidewalks where a resident could be fined or a business?
No, there is not.
Is the council going to consider an ordinance with the lack of people shoveling?
The council could consider it, I'm not endorsing it.
Okay, I just feel even as a consideration of all citizens, it's, I remember as a kid, everybody would shovel and pay you to shovel if not, and it seems that people just don't care and it doesn't get done, and I shovel my walk and some elderly neighbors, and if you do it every storm, it's not a big deal to keep up with it. People just fail to do it, period, and then there's ice, as Mr. Alfred states, and you can't do anything with it. Snow is like concrete and you have one chance to work with it. The next day it's frozen and, you know, time's up. My other comment is about the width of the roads, and I have noticed as the snow's melted, it's been two to three feet from the edges on both sides, the plows failed to cover on the first plow. And whether we have three inches of snow or three feet of snow, the first initial snow gives them a guide on where to push the snow as far as pushing it back. And I just think for what it's worth, when we have three to six inches, if they keep it as close to the edge as possible, it gives them a future reference where to push the snow, and I just don't see that being followed all over town. And as the snow melts, you can see a sand line where the plows have failed to bring a curb to curb, and it has been very dangerous and the roads have been very, very narrow. And we have great equipment in this town, great people doing the work, and I just think on the day after or the, the day while the snow is still soft, especially on Canyon Ave where you have the ambulances, we haven't had curb to curb. And it is expensive to come out with a payloader and do that job if the big plows could try to at least hit it before it does freeze up. And I have traveled to Worcester as well as Kathleen, and it's, it's a war zone. There's got to be six, eight inches of snow still on the roads, but it's a, it's a different world compared to South County. We live in God's country. I don't think they have the tax base that we have and the percentage of taxpayers, so we do strive for a higher standard here. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments on the public? Further comments here at the table?
I would just like to close these comments with, the comments have been listened to. We have had the crews out with tireless efforts and we will see if we can improve. This has been a challenging winter, and I want to make sure that everybody knows that the public safety is the first concern. I've had conversations with Mr. Alfred with how are we on the budget in the sand, and he has assured me with every conversation that the public safety is number one priority here. So thank you for your comments. I would like to just mention a few other items under communication. The Union Fire District on February 10th recognized many of our volunteer firefighters in the town, and I would just like to read some of the names of the people that have been honored that night. We have firefighter Timothy Redman, who has done a lot of training, one of our volunteer firefighters, Chief Deputy Jack Carney has put in 50 years. We have special accommodation recognition awards for all of these captains, Dennis Rockwell, John Gould, Captain Singarana, Captain Schofield, Brand Mere August, Whiters Armstrong, the ladies auxiliary is Kim Amesworth, Special Hazards One got a unit citation, and some heroic actions from firefighter Brian Kroll. An honorary guest were honored, Mark and Robin Weinmiller, who run the wagon, who provide coffee and food for our firefighters, Ron Sterns, Lori Plummer, and some civilian awards. We had an incident with a car up at the Bright Views, and it was a Phyllis Bouchard that helped, she was a civilian, and Kayla Dion and Brian Motuzik. There was an incident at Ichabod Crane, so it was definitely a wonderful celebration to honor our volunteer firefighters in the Union District. So one of the other good things that we have, great things we have in our town. Also would like to mention that South Kingstown Kears has a spelling bee coming up on March 5th. It's at the Elks, so if people would like to put that on their dates. This is a fundraiser for our school department. And tomorrow night, we have at South Kingstown High School, the junior class is sponsoring a hypnotist, supposed to be quite entertaining, from 7 to 9, and this is to help promote and put, you know, delete some of the cost for their post-prom activity. So the junior class is going to have a post-prom activity, and this is a fundraiser tomorrow night, 7 to 9. Tickets will be sold at the door. I think that's the updates that I have. Anybody have any further updates? Okay, which brings us to Town Manager's Report.
I was going to address both the snow plowing and Dougway, so I think my report's complete.
Thank you.
Unless there are questions, I have nothing.
Okay. And we have a few appointments. Do you want to deal with that?
We would like to appoint Diane McHugh to the Board of Trustees for the South Kingstown Library. She would, what would be the term she'd serve, Dale, do you know? Three years from today?
7/13.
Yes, 7/13.
7/13. I move that we appoint her.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion. Jim?
Yeah, I've had a chance to think about this, and I will not be supporting her. She's certainly qualified, and we also have had many other qualified candidates for this committee. And we also have a number of qualified applicants for other boards and commissions. And unfortunately, early in our work session tonight, I'm uncomfortable with the conversations. I, I was hoping that politics could stay out of this, but I would remind the council that we don't have to be unanimous that this nation is founded on majority vote, whether it be the president, Congress, all of us, majority votes work. And we have a lot of good other candidates, not only for this spot, but for other boards and commissions, and I'm very disappointed we're not moving forward with them.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstention, motion carries 4, 1, 0. And?
I also move that we appoint the tree warden, who is William Wallace, who, he's appointed for the year of 2011. He's been our tree warden for some time, I believe, and he's done a good job.
Steve, how many years has it been? Thirty-some?
I think he replaced Bob Asher in, probably, I think it was probably 1984, 85, somewhere around there.
Yeah, he's been with us a long time. So we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Which brings us to new business, item A. We have a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Penn Valley Pump Company Incorporated, 998 Eastern Road, Warrington, Pennsylvania, for two 2011 Penn Valley double disc pumps, Model 3 DDSX22, in an amount not to exceed $30,486, and as further described in memorandum from the Public Services Director, the Town Manager, dated January 31st, 2011, and entitled "Bid Recommendation, Waste Water Division Double Disc Sludge Pumps." Steve?
Recommendation is to award to the, to the lowest bidder. We had three bids that were received on this, ranging from $33,008 down to the $30,486. We've had experience with the company in the past and recommend approval as presented.
Okay, any questions here at the table?
Motion to approve new business, item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5, 0, 0. New business, item C. We have a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Atria Networking Corporation.
We have a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Atrion Networking Corporation, 30 Services Avenue, Warwick, Rhode Island, to furnish and install new data networking hardware in accordance with all bid specifications in an amount not to exceed $45,460, including a contingency. And as further described in a memorandum from the IT Systems Administrator to Town Manager, dated January 24, 2011, and entitled Town Network Equipment Recommendation.
Again, the recommendation here is to award to the low bid. As explained, the item before that was part of the consent agenda was a bid rejection. We had originally gone out to bid for the equipment in November. The bid specs were found to be defective in that they provided for too great a flexibility as far as equipment types. The specs were then tightened up, and we specified that the equipment to be purchased would have to be Cisco brand. That brought the bids that were uniform as far as us being able to compare what the true costs were that were being presented by each of the companies on the same equipment. Our recommendation now is to award to the low bidder. I believe there was seven different companies that submitted proposals for the various equipment that's to be acquired here, the controllers as well as the network devices.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move approval of new business item C.
Second.
We have motion and a second for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention, motion carries five, zero, zero. And we have new business item D that was removed from the consent agenda. So this is a resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise by reference for order of notice of public hearing relative to proposed amazement to the town code, Chapter 12 offenses and miscellaneous provisions that would establish a new section 12-13 entitled Pace, excuse me, Pet Waste Management. Thank you. And Jim, you have asked for this to be removed, so if you could address this?
Thank you. I guess I was quite satisfied with the town's pet ordinance. Again, just like coastal, I think Rhode Island, DEM, EPA, just somehow another reason gets shoved aside here, and I don't understand it. I know, I'm happy to have this moved forward. I'm just going to vote no because of my outstanding concern that these folks are painting everything with a broad brush and not looking at individual situations. So, regards to the pet waste, as I said, I think our community has addressed this. And hopefully, a lot of folks will turn out at the, after this is advertised, and come to the meeting and tell us what's on your mind. But I just wanted to express my displeasure with the government agencies and the rules and regulations that seem to defy reason and fairness. Thank you.
Okay, Carol?
I have to agree with Jim on this one, although I will vote yes for the public hearing, so I disagree on that. I think DEM requiring this additional ordinance goes above and beyond, and maybe I'm a child of the seventies, but I really think too much regulation could be burdensome to all of us. And I think this could be one of those instances. And I think people, we should have some good faith in society for how people take care of their pets and respect the property of others and the town and the public property. And I think most of us do do that. So I will vote for the public hearing, but I do think this ordinance is just too restrictive.
Further discussion here at the table?
And I do hope people come out to express their opinion on this.
Nope. And I just want to stress again that this is just voting on the public hearing. So do we have a motion to approve new business item D?
I have a motion to approve D.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the discussion. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions, motion carries four, one, zero. Which brings us to new business item F. This is a resolution authorizing the tax assessor to abate taxes in the total amount of $17,967.60, as shown on the tax abatement request, number 465.
I provided the council with the map. I think Gene's memo is self-explanatory. Three of the parcels involve land on the Atlantic Ocean where there's been serious erosion. The utility of that land is certainly in question. The fourth is, town is a property that leases from the town, and the revaluation had defect in it. I am supportive of the recommendations as presented by the assessor.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have a motion?
To approve item F?
Second.
We have motion and a second for the discussion. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries five, zero, zero. New business item G. A resolution authorizing an award of contract to Hinckley Allen Snyder LLP, 50 Kennedy Plaza Suite 1500, Providence, Rhode Island, for environmental legal services associated with town municipal separate storm sewer system and total maximum daily load, related matters as a rate of $390 per hour, and out-of-pocket expenses at actual cost. And as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager, dated February 9, 2011, and entitled Phase II Stormwater Compliance Legal Services. Steve?
Recommendation is to establish a new letter of agreement with Hinckley Allen Snyder for the environmental legal services that are necessary to deal with environmental regulations, particularly those dealing with the TMDL issues that before the town. I've advised the council that the town has received notification from the Department of Environmental Management of a notice of intent to enforce formal enforcement actions relative to the, their requirement for compliance in meeting clean water standards on six water bodies in South Kingstown. We have had an ongoing relationship over the past several years with this law firm who has provided us with services associated with the management of both super funds sites at Rose Hill and at Plains Road. They are familiar with the, with the town, and they are also familiar with the areas of environmental law that we need to deal with DEM on at this point. The letter of engagement will provide us with services at a cost of $390 an hour for those hours that he's engaged. Jerry Petros would be the principal environmental attorney that would work with the town from this firm.
Thank you, Steve.
Motion to approve new business item?
No.
We can make a motion and a second and discuss.
I want to... Okay, we're going to make the motion and a second and then have discussion. Okay, so Kathy has the motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And Carol?
I understand the urgent nature of this, and I know you do have a relationship with this particular attorney, and it does require a great amount of expertise. But I would recommend, in almost all circumstances, that this be put out to bid. Because of the timely nature, I'll agree with you that you need to have this person who's most familiar with the town and the situation. But I don't like the fact that it didn't go out to bid. As with any contract, I think lawyers included, a bid process should be followed, and opportunities should be allowed for different folks to come forward and place their expertise on the record and whatever they have to offer. You never know. You might, you might find some other lawyer out there that'd be just as good or different. I mean, this guy's probably very good, but I just would like to see a bidding process.
Steve?
I just think that it's important to note that on professional service contracts, we do not go out to bid. What we would do is solicit statements of, or proposals, that would be statements of qualifications based on qualifications submitted. We would do interviews, but the connotation of a bid would be that we would be looking at a low price. We would be looking really at the experience that the firm would be able to provide with us, rather than what a cost would be per hour. So it, again, we would go out for requests for proposals as a normal course of action, but not for bids when it came to professional service contracts.
Well, maybe I used the wrong term, but yes, I still think people should have the opportunity to come forward and give their expertise, and we look at all possibilities. And it's certainly, I understand that it's, a professional of this nature, it's not about money, it's about expertise. But it could be about money, too. I mean, sometimes they both go hand in hand.
Jim?
Steve, when would you ask for those requests for proposals? Did we in this case, or did just Mr. Petros? I mean, he has done good work for us, so that's not the issue here. But do we have a list of folks that we would contact?
What we would do is we would research firms that were qualified and send requests for proposals to those firms. We would also be able to post it within the advertisements that we provide through the, through the newspaper, and we would have it posted on the website if we were going to be soliciting proposals.
I did have one question. It's part of this, but if you could maybe quickly answer this. I'm just looking at number five here, Indian Run Brook Metals. I just need to know what these terms mean. The town discharges have not been authorized under this permit since January 2009. I thought our biggest problem was with the roadways there, but what does it mean, the town? Can you convert that to English for me?
The town is required, under the state program, to have stormwater management plans. The stormwater management plans have to provide for a brick-and-mortar solution for dealing with known pollutants that are getting into different water bodies. So from the time that the TMDL, the total maximum daily load was established for the site, without us providing an amendment to the stormwater management plan as it relates to that water body, we're out of compliance.
But are there many other things getting in there? I just don't know how we do this. I'm just...
What is the pollution?
What are the steps here? I mean, first of all, you have a roadway with plenty of oil and gas and just general runoff garbage.
If you were, that's part of the issue, is that you would need an engineering study to determine what solutions would be possible, or if there were viable solutions, to be able to do away with any of the metals or pollution, the oils that were coming off of the road. Because we're talking about entry into Indian Run, which is really the low point for everything from Old Tower Hill Road down, as well as Deokaya to Cuevas. It also is, this also involves the state DOT, Jim.
But is this like some huge tanks, huge capacity between the drainage in the roads and the rivers?
It could be...
Something underground? What is there to capture these things?
There's a number of different options that would have to be looked at. Some of those would be underground tanks that would act as a way of slowing the water, getting to the water course, as a way of being able to filter out any of the impurities. Many of these things are very, very expensive in cost. And again, the real question that needs to be answered before you spend money on brick and mortar is, is there a reasonable expectation that you can accomplish the end that, or the goal, which is, which is the statement of what the, what the TMDL requirements are? And it's not just the, the issue dealing on, on that one, it's the other, the other five as well. I think on this, on the one that you talk about, there's also scouring that's occurring along Indian, Indian Run itself. One of the recommendations through the DEM was that there would be some type of action taken to, to stop the scouring, as well as to be able to deal with some of the erosion that's occurred on the, on the sides of the stream right now. All of those things have costly connotations associated with them.
Something like the March flood? That's just the way it goes?
Yeah. I'm not the one to give you specific examples. That's why last October, you hired Woodward and Curran to be able to review those and to come up with what reasonable expectations would be.
Thank you.
Carol?
Steve, I just had one question on that same letter that Jim was talking about from the DEM. As to number one, it says, "The town is implementing an annual catch basin and cleaning program, but it remains unclear whether or not the town is meeting the goal of inspecting 100% of catch basins annually." Seems like if we're cleaning them, we must, we're probably taking a look at them, right?
We have provided a documentation of every catch basin in the community. We also have to have a testing program for any outfall. We also have to have a program where they want a guarantee that the town is providing cleaning of each catch basin on a yearly basis. We would not have the manpower or the equipment to be able to accomplish that. If a community wishes to tell DEM that they're going to meet that goal, yet I'm not prepared to put my name to say I'm going to accomplish something which we don't feel we can accomplish. And some of the things we've questioned is whether there's a need for cleaning all catch basins once a year, or whether there's, should be a priority order where the most pollution has been found, for those to be cleaned probably twice in the course of a year. And those are the type of common sense approaches we'd like to institute in terms of our review with DEM.
Further questions here at the table? Okay, I believe we have a motion and a second. And are we ready to vote on new business item G? Further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries five, zero, zero. Which brings us to our closed executive session. We have a closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A6 to discuss matters related to or concerning a prospective business or industry locating in the state of Rhode Island when an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the interest of the public. Could we have roll call, please, Dale?
Council President Whaley?
Aye.
Council Vice President McAtee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Unanimous affirmative vote to adjourn to close the executive session at 9:05.
Thank you for attending, and we are in executive session. Thank you.